Next item on the agenda, approve the capital improvement programs 2020 due 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the capital improvements program for the years 2020 through years 2024 inclusive as presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Making some progress tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider resolutions B 2020, 2230 Camp Leavenworth Festival alcohol friendly special event.
Our city clerk, Carla Williamson, will handle this item.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is to consider resolution 2230 to approve the special events, the special event known as Camp Leavenworth Festival 2019 and closing streets to motor vehicle traffic and allowing for the possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor during that time. The following streets will be closed during the hours of the festival per the resolution, Cherokee Street between Second Street and South Esplanade, Choctaw Street between Second Street and South Esplanade, and South Esplanade Street from Delaware Street south to Three Mile Creek. The street, other streets may be closed additional times as deemed necessary by the police chief to allow for setup and breakdown, but those are the hour, those are the streets and the hours for alcohol consumption that we need for the resolution. So, the city is requesting, will be requesting a temporary liquor permit for this alcohol friendly event in these areas.
No questions in the comments, it's not our entertaining motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution B 2230.
I'll second it.
I'm Sir Hurst, I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. The next item on the agenda, consider inspection contract with Affinis for Thornton Street Improvement Projects.
Public Works Director Mike McDonald will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. To Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a proposal this evening from Affinis Corporation for construction inspection services on the Thornton Street Improvement Project. This project, the design originated in June of 2018 and the construction contract has been awarded to Kissick Construction. This is a complete reconstruction of Thornton Street from Fifth Street West to 10th Avenue. That's a curb and gutter, the roadway subgrade, new sidewalks, storm sewer, large precast drainage structures, traffic signal, sanitary sewer, replacement repairs, and a lot of other things that, large and small, that are important to the success of the project. The project was recently awarded to Kissick Construction. It is expected to be about a one-year project. It is going to be in multiple phases over that time period with work being concentrated in different areas over time. And there is going to be a lot of activity going on throughout the year. A quick look at the project award of $4.9 million. A survey in our staff, we believe this might be the largest single construction project wholly funded by city revenue in our recollection. So, it is fairly substantial. Other large ones have had federal or state participation in them. This is 100% city funds. The proposal that we received from Affinis is a construction inspection contract that will help the city properly inspect the project in that we will get the right materials, they'll be installed correctly, they'll be installed in the right order. And while the city staff is prepared to provide some assistance in inspection services, there are a large number of other projects that will require city staff to be away from Thornton Project. And for that, we cannot, we recognize that we cannot inspect it entirely with our own forces and ask for help. It's proposed that Affinis will provide a substantial commitment of their inspection staff. And while they will be here working on the project, the city is not abandoning the project in any way whatsoever. We will have part-time construction oversight, we'll be attending progress meetings, we will be managing the project management aspects of this full-time, working with Affinis and the contractor. In addition to that, there may be times when the level of inspection can be reduced, or perhaps eliminated or paused for reasons such as weather or available of city forces. We look back at our work with Affinis over the years, generally it's been on pavement management projects over the years. And in every case that we could find, have good records of, the amount that we awarded for the design contract and the amount we awarded for the construction contract were never fully expended. There were some years, they were fairly close, and other years, we spent meaningfully less. And in at least one year, we spent no money on a proposal that they had, I thought might be $56,000. We were able to inspect the project with our own forces. So, we believe that we have established a good working relationship with Affinis. We are confident in their abilities and they are confident in ours. It is a substantial number for inspection, but the project is almost $5 million investment on the part of the city. And the proposal from Affinis is for an inspection contract not to exceed $350,142. Mike Hooper has worked with Kristen Leathers with Affinis, who is here if you have questions. And we have taken a large portion of the negotiations, if you will, to get to this point. We've reduced a lot of hours. And we believe that we can cover parts of the project with city forces. And this, this, this value has been substantially reduced through negotiations between Engineers' Office and Affinis Corporation.
Yeah, I've got a comment in terms of, that's a lot of money, for one thing, in $350,000. I'm just looking at what the deliverables are for Affinis, and I'm looking at Exhibit A. The only specific one that I can see with respect to doing the quality assurance, quality control is preparing daily reports of construction activities, testing performed, and quantities of constructed slash completed bid items. What I'm, what I'm interested in is if the Kissick Corporation is out there doing the work. If they make a mistake or don't do something to standard with respect to the contract we have for them, is this, is this contract specific enough that this will be pointed, this will be pointed out by Affinis with respect to their quality assurance, quality control responsibilities?
Yes, sir. Now, that is the reason they were there, is to ensure that everything from the concrete is the right type of concrete, that the moisture content in the soil is the correct moisture content. If they're supposed to do something 12 inches at a time and they do it 14 or 16, that's pointed out to them and it's corrected. That is, that is the reason we strongly recommend having full-time inspection, because the thing you see at the end of the project is the pavement. If the stuff that's underneath it is not done right, that's, that's where the problem is.
I'm all for quality assurance, quality control. And if Affinis was, you had the design contract for this project.
Correct.
So, you should know, I mean, what we, what was called for and that can be, as long as the work is being done. And I'm not saying that you're not. I'm just looking at the contract in terms of this, is this, are the deliverables specific enough to ensure that we get the quality assurance, quality control that we need and that we can react and make changes, or tell the Kissick to make changes if they haven't complied with the design.
I can address that, Mike. Yes, we will have a full-time KDOT certified inspector onsite every day to monitor the work. The daily reports you refer to, that's why they're out there, is so they can document how many workers are onsite, the equipment that is used, the means and methods that are done. They will not direct the contractor, but they will point out that things are either meeting the specification, this book right here, or they're not.
Right.
So, that is really what their job is, is to be the eyes and ears of the city out there, making sure that the contractor is building everything according to the specifications and plans.
And I'm sure as you give them that feedback, they'll, they'll take the appropriate action in nine out of the 10 cases. But in that 10th case, if there's a problem, you come to Mr. McDonald?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, our first step is to build that relationship with the contractor, because it is a partner out there in the field. But to establish the groundwork that we're there to do a job correctly. And I have every confidence that Kissick is out there to do the job correctly as well. They're a reputable company. And our inspectors are very well versed in working with the contractors. And when there is a difference of opinion, if you will, obviously the city has brought into that. But ultimately, the specifications are what dictate.
We also ask that Affinis build their proposal around their senior inspectors, their individuals we have worked with before in other projects that are familiar with, with our staff, our procedures, and our expectations.
I mean, we're paying mostly for their expertise than their experience, right?
Correct.
I mean, there may be some other things, there are some other things on the contract, but that's what we're paying for.
Right.
I think the key thing that's in here also is a small line that says, thank review shop drawings. That's, that is a foundation of, of a good project, is making sure that what you've drawn and specified is in fact what's constructed and installed. And it's the, there is, with things like the storm inlet boxes, or the manhole covers, or the variety of crazy things that are specified. Their contractor submits a detailed drawing of what they have, how they're going to build it, and what they're going to make it out of. And that gets reviewed as part of this process by this team also.
But then, but then going onsite and actually doing it, that's what, you know, that's what, and that's good. I mean, you have to have that step. I'm just concerned when the actual work is being done that, because somebody may not be having a good day in, with Kissick, right?
It happens. It happens. But that's what the inspectors are out there for, is to, to make sure that the city's interests are protected.
Sure.
And there will be inevitably issues that arise, whether it's a conflict with the utility because of, you know, and things like that. But that's also what I'm there for, is having a historic perspective with the design and knowing what the intent was, is to be there as a resource as well for them out in the field, to make sure that we're not delaying construction, which is another problem that sometimes arises. So, our job is to also respond quickly so that we can keep construction moving, so they can meet their deadlines.
And this is over two construction seasons? Is this for the entire length of this contract?
And I want to reiterate that point. This is essentially a 13-month contract. So, it's, it's much, not only a larger dollar project, but it's a much larger timeframe than we've done before. And I will have Mike give about two minutes. We did have a big meeting today with Kissick and talked about phasing and talked about that, so.
Right. There'll be some more meetings, but the meeting today with Kissick was primarily to go over the basic structure of their, their, how they're going to proceed with the project. We had the school district there, because they're impacted primarily at Anthony School, but to some extent at the high school. And it was a very good meeting, and we, we learned a lot about how they're going to approach this project. And it's different than we had expected that they would. But essentially, starting the week of, after Labor Day, they're going to be moving in and planning to be working on before September the 9th. And they're going to start at the intersection of, I guess it's Fifth Avenue, Maple Thornton. They're going to start there, and they're going to work to the west of, what, 150 feet, and to the east, 250 or 300 feet to redo that intersection first. So, it will be closed, but the intersection at Second Avenue Thornton will be open. So, once that is, is essentially done, they expect it to be done in early December, they will move their operation to take care of everything that is east of that. Down the hill to Second Avenue, which will then be closed, there's a big grain structure to be constructed, and then up the hill to Fifth Street. They expect to be done with that, and I think you said March or April, and then they will proceed to work west of, basically west of Maple Street to 10th Avenue to address, there's a big training structure there, too. They may want to work on bits and pieces of that before they're done down to Second Avenue. But that is their basic construction phasing, is the, the longer part of the project is the, if you will, the west phase. And they hope to be on that in early spring. And if you look at some of their promotional material and their, their clients, they tend to work really hard, really fast. So, we're hoping that they'll be done before, if their contract allows them to be. But it is about a, I think, a 14, 13, 14 month process for the major construction. And there's another 30 or 60 days to clean up loose ends of landscaping and such. We'll probably work with them to do the last pavement layer at the very end, so it doesn't get torn up or muddied up from construction traffic, so it looks sharp from one end to the other. But that's, that's a minor inconvenience after the year we're going to have.
We do have a public meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a meeting with the residents and the contractor, and city staff will be happening next week. And then there is, they'll be at the service center, and you're welcome to attend that. We'll make sure you have that information. And we'll also have a pre-construction meeting, it would be a little more formal setting, the contractor, the subcontractors, inspection team, and our employees to go over processes and expectations.
You already had a meeting with the, with the residents in that area, haven't you, on easements and things?
Yep.
Okay. So, will this be the second big, big public meeting, or?
Yes, sir. And, and the goal is to introduce the contractor to the residents, exchange total numbers if they have questions or comments. And easements, I think, we talked about easements at the last meeting. I think we're down to one.
One property.
One unsigned easement, which is one of those driveway tie-in easements. So, I doubt if you'll be seeing any more easement stuff from, from us.
Yeah, let us know when that meeting is. I'd like to know better.
Thank you.
How, how was the attendance off during, during the first meeting? Was it spotty?
Yes, sir. But six, we believe there were six separate properties represented. But the, the impact of it goes far beyond that, is we've provided an opportunity for the public to meet us. And I think that helps all the way through the project with obtaining the easements. They know that something's happening. It's not a shock when we ask them for easements or something like that.
No, absolutely essential. I think it's good. It's just wish, a few more people would attend, but maybe we'll get a, they'll be proud for this second meeting. I'd suggest that more people go to it, but we'll see.
Yeah, we'll, we'll use the same list we used for the previous meeting.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. There's no other comments? Entertaining motion.
I move that approval of the construction services agreement with Affinis for the inspection of the Thornton Street Improvement Project in the amount not to exceed $350,142.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider renewal of waste management contract for 2020 services.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I got one week, two weeks ahead of myself. It's actually on tonight's meeting. I know we moved it up because the bid came in. So, once again, our Public Works Director will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the summary of kind of what we went through last year is included in the policy report from last year, where we selected Waste Management to haul refuse to. I've wanted to basically give you an update and a recommendation. Steve King, our refuse foreman, is here this evening. If you have questions of him and anything that goes on out there, he's, he's right in the front lines with him. But as you recall, last year, based on the indications from the county, that they were going to have a substantial rate increase at the transfer station, staff evaluated other options, and we recommended to the city commission that we haul, haul our solid waste refuse and our sludge from the treatment plant and our street sweepings to the Deffenbaugh landfill now owned and operated by Waste Management in Shawnee. We've hauled a variety of landfills over the years. Truth is, hauling to the transfer station is a fairly easy thing to do, but it was prohibitively expensive. And the commission approved that we would, we would haul our refuse to Shawnee beginning January 1st of this year. And we have been doing that ever since then. It has not been a perfect experience, but I think we have, we've learned a lot about how we're structured, because we have to work a little bit smarter and, and a lot harder to get it done. And the biggest thing we did, I believe, was change the route structure. If you recall, we shifted the thirsty routes. We broke them up and shifted a lot of the routes around so that they're more balanced, lets us manage, manage our trucks better. Then we've had some mechanical problems with trucks, which have caused us, we tried a variety of different things. We've tried everything from sending half-full trucks early in the morning to the landfill, so they're back on the route and can be stuffed full throughout the day. We've tried filling them up at night and taking them before the crack of dawn in the morning. Steve's come up with even crazier ideas that we've tried, to try to find a way to have enough, the number of trucks match the number of collectors to match the trash that's on the ground. And I think after the first six months, in a, in a general sense, our, our expectations are being met. We're considerably, saving considerable tonnage fees, if you will, by going to Waste Management. We are seeing an increase, of course, in fuel costs and our maintenance costs. The wear, normal wear and tear have not gone up. We have upgraded the tires. It's interesting, the tires on the refuse trucks were the same as the ones that are on the, the sludge trucks for the wastewater plant. And the wastewater plant tires last like three times as many miles. And it's the start-stop-turn thing that was eating our lunch on refuse tires. We've gone to a different tire. That had to kind of bite the bullet, but I think we'll see that show up in less tire purchases in, in future months and years. I think we are, we've made a rational choice and the, the numbers are supporting this. There's always ways to improve what we do, and we're working on making it better. But as I told Steve and Curtis Marks, our operations superintendent, we need to get the trash picked up. If we can't pick it up, we need to tell people that, don't worry, we'll be back tomorrow to get it. And we've been, we've met that goal every single day this year.
Good.
Mr. King or Mr. McDonald, we're paying 24.72 a ton. What, what were we paying the transfer station before they changed the rates? Do you remember what it was?
35, 35 or 37.50.
35, but then they came back to us and said they're moving it to.
45.
45. Yeah. So, the county commission decided that, made that call, I guess, voted on that. But now, we're, we get it for 24.72, but there's a few extra costs involved, because we have to take it down to Deffenbaugh and fuel. But we're still probably about at the same rate that we were at $35 a ton or less, if you put all, all costs involved, am I correct in that assumption?
The, once over lightly, review by, by staff is, we're meeting our goals by the reduction in tipping fees paid for our extra operating costs. Sometimes if expensive things break, we've had a run on truck repairs. We think we're through the worst, worst of it. And it really wasn't related to the trip. But I think the trip brings out, if there's a weakness in the system, that the trip will, you'll find it. Something's going to overheat, something's going to bend one too many times, and we'll, we'll have to fix it.
Has the county come back and, are they holding on to $45 a ton, or have they not?
We, we had discussions informally with Public Works Director, who's, who's no longer there, talking if there was any sense that they might be interested in talking further about it. And those talks have not resulted in any further discussion.
Has any contact been made with that new commission?
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Has any contact been made with the new county commission, not the waste people?
I left that to Public Works Director to talk to the county administrator. We have not contacted them directly.
Because I know this commission appears to be working very well for a five-member commission, and it's working well for the county. So, that might be something they would reconsider, just to bring the extra funds in, because I know they can use the funds.
What, what, which?
We don't have to sign a contract till January. This is only August, we got.
Do they have a lot of customers at $45 per ton on the land, for landfill services?
I said, per hours, about half what they were previously.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's a big increase, you know. So, I think we would really prefer to go to the Leavenworth County Transfer Station, but from a financial standpoint, we can't do it.
We're probably, what, 80% of their business? I'd like to think it was. I think it's actually a little less, probably 60 to 70% of their business. And they've actively recruited outside county users, the transfer station, which the taxpayers of Leavenworth County paid for that to take care of Leavenworth County trash. And then, it's, it's a difficult situation I know that they're in trying to, trying to get, get revenue.
That's why I'm saying, I think we need to contact them and table this.
Well, I think, I think what we run into is where they are in their budget process, where we are in our budget process to be able to, if, if we were to do that now, we've already, by passing our budgets at our rates. The other thing I'd bring up is, it's only a one-year contract, and we entered into that in the summer.
Still adds up some money. I mean, it's not big money, but you take three, four piles of small money, you have big money.
To Mr. Dedkey's point, are we contracting, we're going to give them 11,500 tons, or they just contract 24.72 a ton, and at, let's say, April 1st, we don't give them anymore? Are we contracted for the whole year?
It's, if there is no guaranteed tonnage, other than the minimum bill will be one ton.
Be one, one ton. So, in theory, to Commissioner Dedkey's point, if the county comes back and says, we'll match it, and we go there, then we just owe them $24 a month. It probably won't happen that way, but in theory.
And we have used the transfer station this first six months. Before we, we used it quite a bit before we changed the routes. We'd use it on a heavy day. At one point, we're using it a little more. Now, we've, you know, redone the routes. The commission can certainly either themselves or direct the city manager to request that the county have a discussion. I, I think it's a good point, one I neglected to make, that by signing this contract tonight and locking in the rate for next year, doesn't mean we have to take our trash there next year. So, we could approve this tonight, and you could direct staff or the commission itself could reach out.
As long as we have a way out, it becomes viable.
Right. And I don't know if the mayor wants to reach out to the chairman, if you'd like, you know, how you would like that done. But how, you know, we could certainly do that and still approve the contract tonight to lock that rate in.
So, I'll reach out.
So, if we lock the contract in tonight, we, we don't have any?
There's no minimum ton. It's just that every building will include at least one ton.
Okay. So, there's really minimal, minimal or, or no risk to us in term?
Right.
$25 a ton.
Right.
All right, so do we, there's no other comments? Motion?
Mr. King, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Thanks for sitting here for a couple of hours.
I think it is a good, I think it is a good idea to, to reach out in some way, shape, or form with the county commission. So, I don't know whether.
We tried that.
It was a different, it was a different commission. I think the opportunity is right.
Entertaining motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we renew the Waste Management Contract for 2020 Services at the rate of $24.72 a ton, beginning January 2020.
I'll second it.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, consider change to contract 2018 dash 69 Lena Weaver, Lena Weaver related to 16th Terrace and Thornton Phase One Detention Project.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, our Public Works Director will handle this. And the reason purchasing policy changed a couple of years ago gave the city manager authority, certain authorities to approve change orders. And although this is really small, it is the second change order, so the total amount of the change order exceeds my authority to approve it. So, again, I'll let Mike talk about it, but it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just some additional sod for some work that they did related to the project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is for additional sod for two homes adjacent to the project at 16th Terrace and Thornton. This was specifically related to the large change order we brought to commission several months ago to install a replacement corrugated metal pipe, one that deteriorated. In the process of doing that, we, the ground was, was pretty wet, and we were pushing the contractor to get it installed and be done. We inadvertently disturbed quite a bit more yard than had been originally anticipated. This is to replace the sod on that damage. The owners are going to water it, and then that project leaves officially over.
Yes.
Good.
And so, two home, I, I saw that work going, going on, and it was necessary and everything. Two, two homeowners, right? Because the work was, is it one homeowner's property or two?
Between.
Between. There was two homes.
So, they, so, and they both have agreed to the watering and the maintain, once we put it in?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
Comments? Entertaining motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the change order to contract. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the change order to contract 2018-69 for Lena Weaver in the amount of $1,335.
Second.
Is that the correct amount?
Yes.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, first consideration ordinance, demolition assessments.
The next two items will be handled by our city clerk, Carla Williamson.
You can let Carrie Collins get it.
Carrie.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, Erica.
Hi. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, tonight we're considering a first consideration ordinance levying special assessments for the city's costs to demolish certain structures. The properties listed below were approved by the city commission for demolition. Chapter 22, Article X of our Code of Ordinances provides the tools for city staff to demolish structures. This ordinance also provides for the collection of costs incurred by the city as indicated below. The property owners have been sent invoices. There's been no payments received. The ordinance presented provides for the assessment of demolition cost. Leans have been placed on all properties for the amount of demolition cost and is brought for you for first consideration this evening.
What's the track record? I mean, as these things go on, do we, what are we, what are we able to collect? I mean, is there a certain historical percentage or something?
We do get some of them paid with the taxes. Others remain unpaid. If, if the property is ever sold, then at the time of change of hands, then the, the assessments are, are paid. Other times, they just remain unpaid until they go to a tax sale and then they're, they're set off and, and we don't collect them. They just remain unpaid and they get set off and it's, goes to the tax sale and gets sold.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, nuisance assessments.
Carrie?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, this is about the grass. Considered an ordinance levying special assessments to pay the city's lot clearing costs and administrative fees. Chapter 118, Article 5 of our Code of Ordinances provides the tools for city staff to cut vegetation and weeds. It also provides for the collection of costs incurred by the city. The ordinance presented provides for the assessment of such costs. The owners of the properties listed on Exhibit A consolidated list cover from July 8th, 2018 through July 1st, 2019. They've been billed for the charges and they're given, they're at, given 30 days to compensate the city. In many cases, more than one mowing was required. Right now, if you see Attachment A, we're sitting on 90-plus thousand dollars of mowing cost and that includes administrative fees. Right now, our office is continuing to take payments through the second consideration ordinance. And actually, the county gives us a little extra time to take payments. So if we happen to receive anything between then, we notify the county to remove that. So this is for first consideration this evening.
So when these, some, a lot of these or a good number of these violators, they, they don't pay the, the cost, does it eventually get into court?
No.
No, this process puts it on their, their taxes.
Okay. Same as, okay. So we have a better chance of, of getting this money back because usually a house is associated with the property, not always. And at some point, they don't want to lose their house because they got a $500 grass mowing bill and they can, in theory.
Oh, wow. Does this show up on the credit report?
Yeah, our, we receive, our office receives a lot of calls from title companies and a lot of times, thank goodness for our records retention program, we can pull that pretty rapidly and tell them, these are the, you know, the leans that we have on that specific property.
All right. We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, Uniform Public Defense Code 2019.
The next three items will be our police chief, Pat Kitchens.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the police department is requesting the commission place an ordinance on first consideration that adopts the 2019 Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities for use by the city of Leavenworth. Each year, the League of Municipalities produces a Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas Cities, which is designed to provide us a standard book to operate on and establishes the local ordinances. It is not to take effect until the city and the governing body passes it and publishes it, which we've done every year. Normally, this is nothing more than a housekeeping measure where they make a few changes with a little bit of language or perhaps a penalty phase or something like that's changed. I've highlighted where there are changes, but there are some that I do want to visit with you about tonight that I would find to be substantive and different that I've not seen before in the Uniform Public Defense Code that I want you to be aware of before you consider moving forward and passing it. There are some new ones that I, that I'll sort of cite a little bit. Interference with an EMT, hazing, unlawful possession and distribution of a visual depiction of a child, commercial fossil hunting, those kinds of things. And so when you see those, those are the fairly minor changes. They're new, but they're not earth-shattering. I don't have any particular issue. There are three, however, that I think bear some additional discussion, one of which is a new ordinance in the municipal code that cites unlawful disclosure of tax information. I suppose that might be motivated at the federal level about tax, disclosing tax information. Contained in the ordinance isn't, that would be a violation of the law to do that if you don't follow the proper guidelines. That's in here now. I've never seen that at the, in, in the Uniform Public Defense Code and I felt like that bared discussion if you had any questions about that. There is contained in the Uniform Public Defense Code an entirely new Article 7A. The title of that article is Crimes Affecting Public Trusts. There are a couple of things in there that I want to read to you that would be in here that would affect all of us. When I use the reference officer, I'm referring to you. When I refer, when I say something like employee, that would be me, Mr. Kramer, Mr. McDonald, any public official. And so just bear with me if you would. For example, it cites using confidential information acquired in the course of and related to the officer's or employee's office or employment for the private benefit or gain of the officer or employee or another, or to intentionally cause harm to another. So through the course of our assignments or your position, you come in contact with confidential information and then benefit from that. Whereas before, that might have been seen as an ethics violation, now that is cited as a criminal offense. And so someone might be concerned about that. I suppose all of this is as a result of a very big push for transparency and being above board and all of that. That's a new portion of the ordinance I haven't seen before. Another one, compensation for past official acts. Compensation for past official acts is intentionally giving or offering to give to any public officer or employee any benefit, reward or consideration for having given in such official capacity as public officer or employee a decision, opinion, recommendation or vote favorable to the person giving or offering such benefit, reward or consideration for for having performed an act of official misconduct. So that is specific to both you and us as elected officials and public officers that for some particular reason, if we're able to financially gain, even if it happened in the past, that is now cited as a misdemeanor criminal offense in this book if you so choose to pass this portion of the book.
So conflict of interest, basically.
Correct. Again, I think where those might have been previous to, to this ethics violation, now it's more, now it's clearly cited if you chose to pass this as a, as a misdemeanor criminal offense. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention because that's also new. They created, created an entirely new article and those are some that I think that are relevant to all of us. I wanted to bring to your attention, okay? The other one is CBD oil. You probably have seen throughout the community that you can buy CBD oil just about anywhere now. Here's the difference, and I'm going to try not to bore you to death with a bunch of legal language, but on July 1st, the legislature and the governor passed a law that doesn't make it legal, but you can possess CBD oil with THC, which is a primary component of marijuana, with 5% concentrate or less, which is brand new. So there are provisions to that. For example, you have to be suffering from a chronic or debilitating medical condition. You have to have a letter from your physician that can't be more than 15 months old and you have to have it in your possession with you. So someone could possess CBD oil with THC in it as long as it has less than 5% with those provisions. And so that's brand new this year as well, and I felt like a pretty significant change from where we had been to where we are now with that. So you may get this question. They have a shop downtown that are selling CBD oil. And so if you elected to pass this portion and include that, that would be, the right word is not legal, but there are provisions that outline how you would do that and you would not be subject to criminal charges.
So they would have to go in and show their prescription and then purchase it?
No, sir. You have to have a letter from your physician that says you have a debilitating or chronic medical condition. You have to have that with you. That would be only if we come in contact with you. All right. So the police come in contact with somebody that has CBD oil in their possession. If it has that, the other provisions are, you have to have that letter from your doctor and it can't be more than 15 months old. Then the, it would be very likely they would not be charged with a crime for that. So if you take those provisions out, possession of marijuana is illegal. Smoking a joint, weed, all of that stuff is illegal. The, under those provisions, CBD oil with THC, you would not be subject to criminal charges.
So will the cannabis oil dealers here in town be able to, are they now selling CBD oil with 5% THC?
That is not addressed here, and that's an excellent question. I suspect that they will tread very lightly for a while until they're sure about that. This affects the police department in terms of our enforcement. And so I have told the staff and the officers that if we come in contact with something like this, we're simply going to write the police report and forward it to the prosecutor and let them make a decision about whether they're going to charge somebody and we're not going to make a physical arrest. It is still illegal to possess marijuana and all of that stuff. But this is new and it's different and I want to, you know, make sure that you understand what you're passing. That's a pretty brand new thing that we haven't done in Kansas. Okay. The other ones that I want to mention to you briefly. For some time now, for about the last seven or eight years, we have exempted ourselves. So when you've passed this book, you have not passed the drug paraphernalia portion. We have had our own in the municipal code of ordinances, the other one. We have looked over that pretty extensively and I'm comfortable now that we can use this one that's in the book. It seems to have, whatever it was, and we had difficulty figuring out, figuring out why, I'm very comfortable that this covers everything relative to drug paraphernalia. So I would be asking you to not exempt us from this one and pass that with the book, okay? And then the other one would simply go away. Does that make sense? This would be, where would be illegal to have possession of drug paraphernalia in the standard book. Got that? Okay.
Another example of where you have exempted would be like the Tobacco 21 Initiative, where the, where the Public Defense Code has the age of 18, but you exempted yourself out of that to do the 21. There are other examples where you've done that before, but in this case, we're comfortable with what's in the video, sir.
All right. One final one. I apologize for the lateness of the hour. It's just really new and there's a lot to it. One more. Contained in this book is, is language identified, which is cited permitting a dangerous animal to be at large. We don't like what's in this book. We like the one that we have. So it is much more extensive and has much more regulations and much more punitive if there is a serious problem. So I would be asking you to pass the book, adopt the book, but exempt ourselves from that and make our local one apply. So based on all of those things, I would ask you to give consensus to move forward with those unless you might have other questions.
And just one comment. The draft ordinance that's in front of you does not include the omission of the dangerous animal provision. That was something that came up just within the last couple of days that the chief and I talked about. So if you want to do that, that's not in the draft ordinance, but it will be before it comes for second consideration, we'll include that.
There's no other comments? Do we have a consensus to move all three items?
Yes.
Yes.
Four?
Yes. Okay. Next up would be the Uniform Stand, the Standard Traffic Ordinance is for Kansas Cities. Again, very much the same thing that annually they produce a, a model for us and I'd be asking you to place an ordinance on first consideration to adopt it. I have reviewed, there are, I reviewed and identified all of the changes from last year to this year. These are very much normal where there are very routine minor changes to each particular one, and I'm very comfortable with all of them. I will ask you to have a discussion and would recommend one exemption. And that is, let me find mine. Section 69, pedestrians Soliciting Rides or Businesses. I think we probably all have seen quite a bit of activity recently at the intersection of Fourth and Limit where folks are standing there, walking out into traffic, soliciting money from people while they're waiting at the traffic light. And so that's happened before, but not with the frequency. For some reason, it just seems to have been happening a lot. I was always a little concerned about prohibiting that exclusively because the fire department sometimes with the telethons and all that, they do, they had been doing that. They don't do that anymore. And so contained within this book is a prohibition, but there is a separate section that says we will allow it under a permitting process. I'm asking you to not approve that portion and prohibit the activity entirely. It's just happening an awful lot. I visited personally with the people that were there about a month ago. They were from Memphis, Tennessee. They were not representing a local organization here or a church here. They were a church, but they weren't from here. Maybe I'm a little jaded and suspicious. I'm not entirely sure that everybody that's out there is acting legitimately or for genuine purposes. And so I think for the betterment of everybody and as a matter of public safety, I would ask you to prohibit that. And the mechanism by doing that would be to adopt the book without author, without approving Section D, which is the permitting process, that will simply make it prohibited.
Right. Makes sense.
Who would they see in a clerk's office? You remember that answer they gave me? Never.
Yes.
Oh, that's right. That's terrible. So on that, on that exemption for Section, Section D, is that, and I don't have the paperwork for, for this particular agenda item in, in front of me. Is it, do you note or you're, I mean, we're, we're just doing consent at this point, but when you come back and we do a roll call vote, will we highlight the, the exemptions to the, to the standard books or?
No. You'll just vote on adopting the ordinance that's in front of you. And within that ordinance, there'll be a section that you'll be omitting that, that, that section.
Got it. I got it. Okay.
Pat, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Under Section 135-1, electric assisted scooters?
Yes, sir.
What is their definition?
Let me go to the definition section. Electric motor scooter, sir. Give me one second here.
Electric assisted.
Right. Electric assisted motor scooters. Give me one second. A bicycle with two or three wheels, a saddle, fully operative pedals for human propulsion and an electric motor. The electric assisted bicycle electric motor must have a power output of no more than 1,000 watts, be incapable of propelling the device at a speed of more than 20 miles per hour on a level ground, and incapable of further increasing the speed of the device when human power alone is used to propel the device beyond 20 miles an hour.
I was curious about these new ones that are coming out like in Kansas City to...
Yeah.
We talked a lot about that. We talked a lot about that, about whether we wanted to weigh in that. We don't have that yet here and so we, we, my recommendation is to just simply adopt this book and that should cover it. If at some point during the course of the year, we feel like we need to come back to you and visit and address a specific ordinance change or a problem develops, I think we can do that anytime.
I know there's a few of them in town.
Right. As of yet, it hadn't developed into a problem, so we'll just kind of have to see how that goes. But I'm, I'm comfortable that we can sort through this using this as the manual and then kind of go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. The final one is much more simple. That is the master index for the, oh, did you roll this? I lost it.
Intersection control device.
Traffic control device.
The master index for traffic control devices. So, we have a master list of all the intersection in the community that are controlled. And every year, we come back on an annual basis when we ask you to re-adopt those. There's been one change. The Westland subdivision at 20th and Eisenhower, I think we've added one stop sign out there. So, that's included in the new list. Otherwise, there are no other changes. So, I'd ask you to pass, to put that on ordinance for first consideration.
All right. There's no consensus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Would you, given all of the changes, which is not normal, would you like a 30-day window before I came back? Because usually what I'd do is come back in two weeks. Are you comfortable with two weeks? Is that okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right.
Next item on the agenda, consent agenda. Commissioner Bowyer?
I move approval of claims for July 20, 2019 through August 9, 2019 in the amount of $1 million, oh, there's extra dots in here, $398,736.89 net amount for payroll number 16 effective August 2, 2019 in the amount of $354,310.46 and no police or fire pension.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five-zero. Next item on the agenda, we will enter into an executive session.
Do you want to do comments first?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
I don't have any comments for this evening.
I have no comments. I just request five minutes before we go with executive.
Yes, sir.
No. No comments.
I do have just a couple, and I know we messed up. I just want to bring some attention to a few things. The Midwest Chapter, the MPRA, which is a nonprofit that provides assistance for military, police, soldiers, and families at the fort, completed the recent Three Mile Creek cleanup program. They were the first group to do the entire trail this year because of the flood damage. Not only that, but meeting with Parks and Rec Director today, he just couldn't comment enough about how great of a job they did. They pulled more than 12 bags of trash out of the Three Mile Creek Trail. So, I think it's safe to say that this program is working.
That's awesome.
So, I thank the commission for approving that program.
Yeah.
And not to take any, I haven't recognized every group, but every group so far has done a very good job. But this group had, the first one to have the entire trail that's been underwater.
And I would just say that Melissa Bauer posted that on Facebook, and I think Twitter and I would continue to do that for all those groups.
Yeah, it's been a really good program. We're also meeting new groups that we didn't always interact with, which has been great.
That is awesome.
Real quick on Camp Leavenworth, since our meeting last week, if you look at the website, the website looks completely different. It has updates. The dropdown menus are populated. It has the music, entertainment. I looked, the event part of the Facebook page has 75 people, or 750 people who are expressed interest, proactively clicking on the interested. That event posting has reached over 9,100 people. The Camp Leavenworth Facebook page has 545 people following it. It's on the city's Facebook page, the city's webpage. I approved Monday posters design that'll, posters will go up, will go business by business downtown and throughout the community with posters. We'll post them at all city locations. So, it's really taking off and really solidified. And I encourage people, if you looked at the webpage 30 days ago and thought, "Where is everything?", look now because it's populated heavily and looks completely different. One more quick thing, parks, the hot weather sort of reduced the mowing requirement for parks for a week. So, they took a week, took a two-person crew, and they did a complete inventory of all city park benches. We have 129 benches in the city park. They made repairs to damaged boards and hardware throughout the parks, replaced entire benches at the library in the Fifth and Spruce. And then, as a sort of secondary project, they installed the park benches that the Lions Club provided for Haven's Park.
Great. Fantastic. Check them out.
They did a...
The Lions, yeah.
The Lions, for the Lions, yeah, I saw that.
A lot of good work on that. So, they were able to do that with a little bit of break they got in mowing, so, which you don't always get this time of year. So, I just want to bring those items up.
That's great. I have one question. Do you know when they're going to start the resurfacing for Bob Doherty Basketball Board?
I do. September 16th.
Okay.
Great.
All right. That was all I had.
How much time do we need for the executives?
20 minutes.
Is there, you ready for the motion or is that...
And we need a five-minute break.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that... Yeah, I got it. Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive sessions, discuss security measures pursuant to the discussion of matters relating to security measures, private property, or persons exemption per KSA 75-4319, Subparagraph B, Subparagraph 12, Subparagraph D. The open meeting to resume the city commission chambers at 9:37 p.m. By that clock, city manager Paul Kramer, police chief Pat Kitchens, and city attorney David Waters are requested to be present during the executive session. And I believe there's no action to be taken after the meeting.
Second.
Motion seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Aye.